Okay, good morning, everyone. Really glad that you're here. The August twelfth twenty twenty five meeting of the annual retreat session for the Board of Trustees is called to order. Secretary Burford, please proceed with the roll call.
Trustees, please respond when I call your name. Christine Cronin. Scott Davidson.
Yes.
Margot Gigan.
Yeah.
Gary George. Chuck Hoffman. Aaron Lair.
Present.
Tamara Mabit.
Present.
Jordan Mendoza.
Here.
Cedric Reel.
Present.
Kelly Ryan.
Here.
Brenda Smith.
Here.
Anna Stanley.
Present, PSM.
Carrie Thompson. Mauricio Valerio.
Present.
Chairman Doza, we have thirteen trustees present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Secretary Burford. Please make any opening announcements.
Thank you, Chair. We ask everyone to please put your cell phones on do not disturb. If you brought a laptop or device, please be sure the speakers and microphone are turned off. The board microphones are directional and need to point at your face to pick up your speech properly. Please speak directly into the mics so that your words will be part of the official record. And so the live stream audience can hear you. If you're joining us remotely, please keep yourself muted unless speaking. That concludes my announcements this morning.
Thank you, Secretary Burford. Real quick, team. We're gonna get into looking at the data that we have from our board evaluation. And we'll have a hopefully really good discussion. Sometimes I forget to say certain things. If you do get a moment sometime today. It'd be nice to thank Susanna for all that she does to help us with. I'll just say help us with food, help us with logistics, help me to be organized. Help me with writing things and doing things. If you didn't know, Susanna is a big deal with with this board and helping behind the scenes. The other person for me, Chris Burford. You know, our agenda, a lot of the writings, a lot of the things that I read at times come from Chris and as well as Susanna. Kind of moving us forward happens quite a bit through both of them. And I don't I don't know if they're they're always seen or thanked for all that they do in support of us. Especially in support of me. So if we can give them a hand, let's give them a hand. I would also, just as a as a reminder, yesterday was a pretty great day. We haven't had our alumni board or our foundation board or our board together all at the same time. I wish we would have thought of that sooner. For for me personally, I've always had a dream of EOU's foundation having fifty million, seventy-five million, a hundred million dollars so that we could do great things for students or great things for coaches or assistant coaches or all kinds of other programs, especially programs that serve students that are that are underserved. So just us doing things in that direction, I think, is gonna be very healthy for Eastern Oregon University and the students as well as the faculty and staff. So really glad that we spent some time doing that. Another person that I I guess I I said something when I talked about myself having a very strong relationship with the Dean of Education when I was a college student. I did, I'll say this, Jen Robinson was my mentor. Not many universities, I think, have deans of educations that take their students to lunch or have coffee with them or guide them or mentor them or show them a pathway of how to be. Jen was a former superintendent. He was a superintendent of McMinnville before he became the Dean of Education for Eastern Oregon University. I met him my freshman year. By the time I was a senior, I worked for the College of Education. I he let me have a room basically underneath his house. And Christie and I lived there for two years. And there was a deep relationship and a deep connection with him and his wife. And so I very I very much bonded to him. But I want also want to make it clear, I have I've had a great relationship also with the current Dean of Education. And all of like, to me, Rayett Newman is special. I've known her for quite some time. She's a wonderful administrator, a wonderful educator, a really great partner and collaborator with our school district and as well as for many school districts and throughout the state. I usually tell her that she's a pretty big deal. She's a pretty big deal. She may not act like she's a pretty big deal, but she's a pretty big deal. And I've seen that and I know that about her and I'm crazy about her, too. So I wanted to make that clear. All right. All right, team. So that's gonna we're gonna look at our board survey. So I'll lead in this. And I tried to just encapsulate the data that we received when we did our survey results. Chris sent them out a couple of weeks ago. I pretty much put them into here's the question, here's the average score, the composite average score. And here's it into a percentage. And then you would see, and I made it to have a category of from, you know, basically to a one to a five. So one being pretty low and a five being pretty strong. And I wanted you to see, like, overall, you know, as you're looking at it, overall, we averaged like a three point nine seven composite score. So close to a four or close to eighty-nine percent. And it was about a seventeen or a seventy-nine point four composite on an average. So I'm gonna say we rated ourselves basically as a B overall when you put everything together. Now I just want you to to look at stuff. And the first thing that I want you to to look at is the areas that says growth opportunity. So I'm gonna give you about a minute. And then what we're gonna do is we're gonna think about those growth opportunities and express anything that we want to express. And then later on, I'm gonna look at areas that say solid performance or better. And then I want us to talk about that. And that's gonna be our reflection, and then I'll get into deeper discussions in a moment. But let's take a minute, let's look at our survey, and let's look at the data, and then let's reflect. All right, team, I'd like to entertain some thoughts on what you've seen so far, really focusing on that yellow. What are your thoughts on on any of those indicators that that show that there's probably some room for growth or some areas to improve?
Chair.
Chair, trustee Mab.
Thank you. For clarification, the highlight yellow is your priority? Is that what you wanted? Is that the yellow?
The yellow is a growth opportunity or a need for improvement. And I I I should have done, actually, after I did this, I thought, oh, the green, I could have put like a green for this is what we're doing.
A little more color would be good, but you're it's okay.
Yeah, I I focused on growth areas first, and then I you can star if you want to. I'll say the solid performance or the major strength, you can start those also as like, these are the things that we'll talk about in a moment. But and when and when we say we're at seventy-five percent and that's a growth opportunity, we're still not that bad. But that's that is a growth opportunity.
Have a question, clarification? Thank you so much. I I just wanna make sure that we all understand that what we're looking at. This is a survey that was conducted by Board of Trustee members, right? So sample size is like twelve, thirteen, something like that.
Yes.
Okay, and okay, that's all. For now, that's all I want, thank you.
Yeah. 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 Any quick thoughts, my friends?
Yeah, sure.
Cedric, trustee Reel.
The one that I find interesting or I think that's should be fairly easy to consider is engaging with internal and external stakeholder groups. Think the board's made a lot of effective movement towards that in recent times. I also think that there's a lot of opportunities for trustees to get involved in various events around campus. So I would like to see, I've spoken actually with Susanna about this a little bit a week ago, you know, just on how the board can effectively know about some of the things that are happening around campus. It's, you know, it's obviously, it's on a volunteer basis. We have a set schedule of meetings, but being able to make it to some other things that matter around the university, whether it be showing up to the fair, showing up to a random parade, definitely trying to show up to commencement, you know, so that we can engage with people aside from our strict meeting schedule. I think that 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 matters. I try to involve myself and, you know, just just I'm sure others would, too, as long as we knew what some of the things were that were happening.
Thanks, a great suggestion. Maybe a a calendar of events and a reminder each month of the things taking place. And if board members want to participate, then then you have that. And then I think if you want want to chat with Chris about it or chat with Suzanne or chat chat with Dr. Ryan about attending, then then you do those things. But us having a calendar of, and I think that they they have that in general, but.
I believe you're receiving the info, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in some ways, that's overkill because you get it every day. And so how many days do you actually look at it, honestly? It's not your job. But we have in prior discussions, this goes back a number of years about this. That's kind of what we landed on as opposed to, say, doing a a monthly preview or something like that. And I'd want Tim in the room for that conversation if we, because but I I mean, we can.
Let me tease out. I've been a board member as well. I've been a superintendent. And in that sense, if if Cedric, are you saying you want us to feel invited to those things? And a little more specificity than an info line?
Yeah, maybe a little more personal, like the info line's there and, you know, and I'm finding out about events with the info line. It's it's good, you know, that that's fairly effective. But the EOU email is also one that I I still use a little bit more. I'm not sure that everyone on the board looks at that email necessarily too frequently. So that's probably something that's a little bit more just like, hey, there's these events that, you know, it'd be cool if we could get a trustee or two at, kind of like we did with the with the stair. I remember seeing a specific email inviting about the staircase to try to get some trustees towards the staircase opening, so stuff like that. I wasn't able to make it to that.
Yeah, I I know for me, you know, I can tell our board members, we got a lot of these games, we got all these activities, here's this thing, here's our calendar. And they that doesn't make them feel like I'm supposed to show up.
Yeah.
But when they get a message of we we would like for you to attend, then that makes them feel
Yeah.
that you should try to show up if you can. So if that's the or the vibe that you're going with.
Yeah, just an invite, yeah, so.
Sure.
I think apologies, I saw trustee layers first and then.
If there's more discussion around Cedric, this is the.
These are all things, yeah. And if we take some actions like a specific email, that'll be a good action to improve.
Perfect. You can add, yep. I just, what Cedric said and the board's culture is developing as it should, and that was also a priority area. To me, that there's opportunities there, right? Like, if if we do a specific event or we come to a specific event, like that could help build the culture of the board. So and it's, I can't believe I'm saying that either because I'm three and a half hours from here.
Yeah, so Chair, a thought occurs to me, a board statement we never talk about is board statement number four. And it's about how trustees get reimbursed for attending events. And it's when when a trustee is specifically asked to come represent, then they can be reimbursed. Otherwise, with like a general invitation, they're not. And I don't know that we've been using that specific invitation piece. So perhaps we could kind of divvy up, you know, everybody gets two a year or something like that.
Hey, that's fair, and I think that's true, that that might be, right? Reasons that it's more of a not as specific and more general. And I think that we, as trustees, should be okay with, if it's a general invite, you're you're invited. But if you're specifically invited, you're gonna be reimbursed or something like that, kind of having a viewpoint. And I love your thought, by the way, Brenda, trustee Smith, that was that 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 would keep building culture.
I have a comment. In reviewing all of this, I I just wanted to highlight that the major strength is that the board effectively monitors the university's fiscal circumstances and effectively performs its duties regarding budget, tuition, fees, audit, financial performance, higher level fiscal responsibility, and related strategic decisions. I think that's awesome. I think that we should celebrate that. I think that's that's why we're here. That's that's the main purpose of why we're here. I mean, I think the softer things in culture are also very important. But I I think that since that is a major strength and it is a percentage at ninety-three point four, I think that we should recognize that. I mean, that's that's a big deal.
Yeah.
Just wanna celebrate that.
I love it.
Thank you.
I love that. I would I would just to echo, I I mean, I wish I would have put that in green or in really super something. The reality is, I always have these, like, a good board. I'll just say good at vision or goals or direction. A good board, same big picture like that, and then fiduciary responsibilities. And then a good goal is having good policies or rules. We do that. If people, sometimes when I saw the board's cultures developing, like, our culture should first be set on staying really high level. How are we doing with policies, rules, or law or order? How are we doing with vision and direction? And how are we doing with finances? That that's that's the major thing. And and to have that really at ninety-three point four, we're doing the major things right. Culture, you know, I can get into the second page, but culture is if you're doing those things very well, then you probably also have a pretty good culture. And I don't think we might have a an understanding of what is all culture or what culture entails. But I'll just say culture always starts at the relational level, too. How we treat each other, how we support one another, how we collaborate, how we listen, all of that. And that I would also say, even though we say culture is low, we're pretty good at how we treat each other, how we listen to each other, how we support, how we let people express their views. So it'll be a deeper conversation. I love what you said. Thank you, trustee Gigan.
That's actually leads right into my comment is that the I think, and we just ironically, I was just talking to Tamara last night about the fact that this is one of the more high functioning boards that I've been privileged to sit on or sit adjacent to or interact with in the sense that, at least in my time here, I've been proud that we really don't shy away from critical conversations and critical pushback. And we kind of lean in and stay in those conversations. And I think part of this reflects back to me that we do, like what you just said, have a pretty strong culture because we do take a critical lens, kind of look seriously, we take our roles seriously, we respect each other. The other thing in boards such as this, sometimes I've witnessed where there's some interesting power dynamics at play depending on the positionality or people that serve on different boards. And we can all probably call up an example of that, and I've never seen that. So kudos, I think, to the recruitment efforts, the strategy and the intentionality behind encouraging folks to come participate on the board, setting the tone for what that looks like and the expectations around kind of how we operate together. Because I think my takeaway from this is that we have little, like, you know, slight turns of the dial, but there's really nothing comprehensive in here that's really, so to go to Dr. Ryan's conversation yesterday, there, even though the ranking now is a direct inverse of our conversation, there is no existential crises in this. And I think that just provides a better platform. Like, I've always felt really disappointed when boards of entities are super dysfunctional because it doesn't give a a good playing field for those who need to then be empowered to lead in those spaces. So I I appreciate this board and the way that we work together and the high regard we hold each other in.
Love it. So we're gonna go with trustee Mabit, and I know Vice Chair Cronin had earlier you were wanting to say something and it's eventual, okay. So we'll go with trustee Mabit, and then we'll go with trustee Reel.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Chuck. Tamara, you're first. I I haven't noticed, I didn't. That's another part of culture is people being patient. So
I'll be great.
No, no, it's perfect. Take as much as you need. So trustee Mabit, then trustee Reel, then trustee Hoffman.
Sure, thank you. And I think mine is additive to Cedric and to Brenda. And just below the board engages appropriately is a growth opportunity that I may have highlighted. And the talent, skills, experience, knowledge, and expertise of individual trustees are being effectively employed. And I think I'm in my fifth year now, and I'm getting the hang of what what's our role versus what's the administration and the staff's role? And never, and and everybody that I interact with does an amazing job. But I do have a sense that there are a few opportunities for board members to be additive to that. So, for example, the conversation we heard yesterday about funding, there might be opportunities that, depending on the industry or business, individual board members are involved in, we might be able to add value to those discussions. So it's really on my mind and heart that we need to do a good better job of raising funds, right? Just to make us more long-term sustainable. So I don't know exactly what that looks like, except that I think all of us are eager to serve, not just to attend meetings, but if there are other events or if we can help settle events, set up events, one, to advocate for the university, but really with an eye towards looking for funding opportunities, connections with donors, connections with programs. And I don't know the answer, but I'm I'm receptive to guidance on how individual trustees could do that so we don't interfere. And I don't know the answer, but I'm 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 receptive to guidance on how individual trustees could do that, so we don't interfere with the work of our paid professionals.
For sure, um I love that.
Yeah, I I wanted to just kind of echo a little bit about what Tamara said, because you know, you may recall, like I wrote you and I was like, hey, can we set up meetings in your area like we. We did with Brenda's area, and I think that's really a really fertile place for this, you know, one of the things I'm thinking as I read this is. The third one down that's highlighted in yellow where you're working with statewide higher education leadership. I don't know that that's critical to what y'all do, but what you just said, I think is right, like helping us make those connections and moving towards. You know lucrative partnerships, not just financial, right, like there's there's so many other ways.
And I know. I'll just call it anecdotally or informally, I know we probably do that. Uh with Dr. Ryan or others at times, I know for me, I'll sometimes, I mean, I wanted to see uh. Mike meet Kelly and Tim, just to see where it went, no promise of anything, but. If we want to do a little bit more with the foundation or if we want to have more connection, and I was feeling. That that need or a a desire for us to know more about the foundation and so on and that. We all have some relationships or connections or some things that we think might be supportive. I remember, you know, if there's senators or different people that we think can help this university or or businesses or. I think to sometimes just getting them to talk, that's. That's all I ever want, sometimes it's just for people to know each other and to talk and see where it goes. Trustee Rio.
You know, keep it pretty quick, I guess uh it's, you know, going back to the uh board culture developing as it should. Um I did find it that it was still a little surprising that, you know, it was it was lower, I mean, it's been. Um already spoken on, but you know, I've spoken with other board members or met other people from other boards, like I don't even know how you guys get anything done. Like that sounds very dysfunctional, um so I, you know, it's and it's good to be critical, so I guess, and maybe it isn't this conversation. But a follow up I'd be curious on is for some of the members, no one needs to out themselves, that felt like we're not where we should be culture wise, I'd be. Curious on like what's some of those, it sounds like we're kind of speaking around the bush a little bit on some of them, but I'd like to know like directly what we think we need to do. To develop the culture and where it needs to go, um you know, that's important, I think it's very important, um. So yeah, I was a little surprised that that was lowered, that's good, I'm glad we're pointing it out, but now I want to know what we can do with that.
That I think I'll just take us to that and then we'll go with um. Uh trustee Hoffman, what. What makes a good culture, page two. And let's go with trustee Hoffman, can you read what makes a good culture? And then we're gonna go with you afterwards, and to me, there's a fundamental, I think, sometimes misunderstanding of what is a good culture, and that's why we rate the way we rate or. So go ahead, uh trustee Hoffman.
What makes a good board culture? Trust based, members trust each other and the administration fostering open and honest dialogue. Transparent decisions and rationales are clear with no hidden agendas. Respectful of roles, trustees focus on governance, not micromanagement while supporting administration. Inclusive, all voices are heard and dissent is respected as part of a healthy decision making process. Forward looking keeps discussions focused on the future rather than dwelling on the past, improvement oriented regularly evaluates its own performance and seeks growth.
Okay, so I wanted to make it clear, these are the best practices of what is a good board culture, even a good board, and um. I'll just use this word, cause I say it sometimes, we're close. We're pretty close to all these things. So I think we can talk more though.
I also want to note that this is a fine definition, but it wasn't included in the survey, so when people were answering that question, how they define culture, how you define culture, how I define culture. Is highly subjective and different and I I'll, this was not there, I'm sure that if it was, we may have a different response.
Right, let's have trustee Hoffman.
All those comments are are great segues into what I was going to say. I may personally be responsible for part of the lower score because I didn't rate this very high because I was confused what the question meant. Um culture to me is in the eye of the beholder to a certain extent, and when you talk about board culture, um. I'm not sure I really understand what what the 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 core of that question gets to. The second thought I have is, um you know, this survey was sent out after a somewhat contentious board meeting, I think we need to put that out. Um and I think people probably walked away from that board meeting with a a certain amount of 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 ouchiness. The the third thing that I wanted to point out is is. Team building is not something that occurs during general discussions at the board level. Uh it 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 takes effort, it takes work, it takes focus. And so I, because I thought this would probably come up. I brought this book called Please Understand Me. It's it's a tremendous book that I have used on multiple boards, I even use this in my office, every five years. I would put my staff through going through that, this is a Myers-Briggs book. And basically, um what it does, if you're not familiar with Myers-Briggs, I mean, there's a whole bunch of personality. Things, right, the type A, type A, and that Myers-Briggs divided into sixteen categories, which I think is borderline too many, but anyway. Um and it really helps understand. Why people act the way they do. Um whether you're extroverted or introverted. Yeah, you know, Carrie and I are probably as far apart in personalities as 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 people can be, but we work well together. Because we understand what the other one's doing, so I would suggest, and I'll just throw this out. You you know, these retreats are great, but. From my perspective, we're wasting a half a day. And 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 if we really want to focus on on team building um and developing culture or anything else where you have yellow marks. Maybe we should take some time and 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 actually focus on those and and um. One of the first boards I was on, the facilitator brought this, and you you take a test, I think there's a hundred questions, and she said. Okay, we're gonna take a test now, everybody, watch Chuck. And I'm going, you know, what 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 the heck's up with that, well, you know, so I do my hundred questions and I'm done, I'm looking around at everybody, you know. What's what's taking you, you also, I found out of of something called an ENTJ, which George Patton and George Custer were also. So I said, you know, you know, this explains a lot of what happened in grade school and what happened in junior high, what happened in college and the rest of my life, so. So anyway, I just throw that out, that that maybe that's a thought.
Yeah, no, I I love personality assessments as well, if we had that kind of time, I would do that. So maybe we should. Hey, hey, we we had the bowling thing, we had the golf thing, we had all kinds of stuff. Let's go with vice chair Cronin, I know she's been she's been very patient.
Well, I I don't think I really have, this has been a great discussion, I really appreciate hearing. Uh what others have said, I I was kind of gonna go in the direction of where Margot went because um I was. I'm an optimist, I like to look at the positive and uh as Margot pointed out, uh our highest score was um. That we're do doing our fiscal due diligence, so. I think that's exciting to hear that we feel like we're doing a good job, I think we I think we are, and I think we've uh. Need to continue in that vein, and then number two was um. Uh working and hiring with the the president and we we, you know, went through that, we have uh. Tremendous confidence in our president, we did a great job with that, I feel in in in. If possible, increasingly proud of that work, and then the other, the number three was. We handle tough decisions well, and that kind of comes back to board culture. We can have those difficult discussions and we do make those tough decisions and we've. We've had to make some tough ones, we're gonna have to make more, so I I feel like. Um I like the idea of of maybe spending some time in in a uh touchy feely thing and doing. Doing some. Yes, I'm shocked that 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 came from you, but um but I I do think it's good to get to know one another. And get to know personalities and that's a that's a great thing, so anyway, I just uh want to point out that um. With a small sample, you'd get, you do get us, it can seem to be uh more impactful than it maybe is. One person can skew the whole thing, um but I do I do feel that we need to recognize that we are functioning pretty well, and I can say this. In my experience, this is a very high functioning board, so.
I'm gonna I'm gonna move this forward in this way, another one that uh. Cause we hit the, we'll hit that solid one, we also monitor. The many non academic factors that affect student experiences and satisfaction with the university. And effectively incorporate consideration of those factors into decision making, that was another one of our solid things, the reality is again, uh we're we're pretty good. And I've done and I do colors personality, I've done other types of assessment, colors takes about twenty minutes to get your own color, and then once you know. The golds or the blues or the greens or the oranges and some of the things that you can say or do with them and some of the things that are their weaknesses as well, um and what they have to. Look out for, how others see them, um I love that kind of stuff myself, and it does uh help me to understand people better. Um I try my best to be an understanding person as it is, but I think uh when we do that, we're not all golds, uh some are blue or some are. Greens or oranges and uh I would just say I'm, to be clear, order structures, routines, consistency. Um but blue relational, team oriented, um worrying about others and what they so. And it may seem that my blue is dominant, but it's not, uh gold is usually my dominant of what I'm looking for and the reality is that's good, um. We're a great team, I'll just say that, now, let's do this. We're gonna move faster now just to get us through this, uh Scott, will you read that top section?
What makes a good board?
Yes.
Okay. So what makes a good board? Strategic and mission focused, keeps the university's mission, vision and long term goals at the forefront. Well informed and prepared, comes to meetings having read materials and ready to contribute meaning meaningfully. Diverse and expertise and perspective draws on varied professional and life experiences to strengthen decision making. Collaborative and respectful engages in constructive debate and speaks with one voice once decisions are made. Accountable holds itself to the president and the institution to high standards of ethics and performance. Engage with stakeholders, builds trust and connections with students, faculty, staff, alumni and the community.
Thank you so much, trustee Stanley, if you're, are are you there? If we get her later on, I'd like for her to to be able to speak or to read to us, um. I I hope we all get to know um Anna better, she is uh, I I really enjoy her. Very smart, very very talented. Uh we already did what makes a good board culture, trustee Mabit, will you read uh the plus delta? And uh for those that haven't done plus deltas, for for me, it's the positives or the pluses, the deltas are areas of growth.
Sure, plus delta analysis based on data as well as comments and feedback plus equals strengths. Strong alignment with E O U's mission and values, collegial respectful environment among trustees. Productive working relationship with the president and leadership team. Effective governance practices that avoid micromanagement. Timely and transparent communication from administration, commitment to student success and community engagement.
Like to get uh Carrie involved, so trustee Thompson, will you read the delta?
Delta based on data as well as comments, feedback, opportunity for growth. Increased trustee engagement in strategic fundraising and advocacy. Expand professional development opportunities for board members. Enhance long term financial planning in light of funding uncertainties. Broaden communication and visibility with external stakeholders.
All of these things came from our ratings and came from the feedback that was given. So these are things that we're, we've heard or we've said. And these are things that can be actions for improvement based on these needs. Um trustee Valerio, will you read the summary?
Summary statement, the data indicates that E O U board trustee is a high performing board with a healthy culture. Well positioned to support the institution through both opportunities and challenges. Trustees value their working relationship, engage in respectful and constructive dialogue. And demonstrate a shared commitment to governance governance excellence. The few areas for growth identified are strategic in nature and reflect the proactive approach to continuous improvement.
Thank you for that. So this is me doing it one more time, I know sometimes it's a little bit of overkill, but I, if we really needed to uh make it clear to uh. To Dr. Ryan or to Secretary Burford, um. That executive summary um is a little bit of a recap, trustee Rio, will you read that key strengths? Last page.
Key strengths. Commitment to shared governance and mission, trustees understand and support the board's governance role, mission and direction. Effective board operations, meetings are productive, collaborative and respectful. Board culture is positive. Strategic focus, the board maintains a strong focus on student success, financial health. And planning for enrollment and access. Board presidential relationship. The relationship is respectful with trust in presidential leadership and clear role delineation.
Again, this came from our survey. This came from our comments, this came from our data. Trustee Hoffman, will you read the areas for improvement?
Board engagement and preparation, inconsistent participation and committee work and preparation for meetings. Monitoring the use of data, opportunity to strengthen board's role in monitoring institutional data tied to strategic outcomes. Communication transparency, trustees noted the need for greater transparency and information flow. Professional development, desire for more learning opportunities around governance policy and higher education.
Sorry.
You should probably start again.
Board engagement and, I'm gonna start over, I'm gonna start at the top. Areas for improvement, delta. Board engagement and preparation, inconsistent participation and committee work and preparation for meetings. Monitoring and use of data, opportunity to strengthen the board's role in monitoring institutional data tied to strategic outcomes. Communication and transparency, trustees noted the need for greater transparency and informational flow. Professional development, desire for more learning opportunities around governance policy and higher ed trends. Diversity, equity and inclusion, mixed feedback on the integration of D E I into the board work and priorities.
Again, these are the things that came, so these are the areas where uh. Whether it's Chris or I, Chris Burford or I, or. The future um chair, trustee um chair. These are all areas that can improve over time. Okay, last part, recommendations for growth, uh trustee Smith, will you read that?
Recommendations for growth, continue board activities that focus on governance, higher ed policy, D E I and self assessment results. Continue board activities that use strategic metrics related to enrollment, finances and student outcomes. Continued focus on board committee roles with expectations, timelines and defined responsibilities. Strengthen communication through post meeting highlights. And centralized access to board materials. And elevate strategic dialogue during meetings by dedicating time to long term trends and challenges.
So I'll I'll end with that, again with, you're probably seeing things that we've discussed or we've done. And we've tried to improve, and I'll use that word. We're close, we're close to doing a lot of the right things, um we're not that bad, we can always get better. But it was good for us to spend some time on this. I'm really thankful for you all, I'm gonna move us on if that's okay.
One call in George.
Oh, yep.
So I think all these are true, and yet when we walk in a community and we. Talk about E O U. We are walking a fine line of conveying what we feel, what I feel. That E O U is doing, knowing all this and trying to track it, whatnot, and we can never speak with the voice of the board. So that puts us in a kind of a tricky position, and I think it'll be very, very helpful. And I think it'll be very, very helpful to have this follow-up on a comprehensive campaign. Cause we may be able to agree on the story that we can all tell and the story would be consistent. Will be almost tried like an elevator speech or whatever, something that really we can feel comfortable. That is not my idea. Yesterday we were brainstorming, we have hundreds of different ideas of what we are here for. So I think in addition, the next survey. It would be different, uh, interesting to see how would it change when we have a comprehensive campaign planning in place. That will help inform the board of what, how to tell the story and uh, to the communities, to the people. Or to the investors or to the stakeholders, whomever want to tell. So the connection between the two will make, I think, a marked difference in the next survey that we'll see.
Trustee Davidson.
Uh, yes, I'd just like to add to Mauricio's comment there. I've been in a number of these discussions or we'll bring in facilitator and go through the SWOT analysis. And I think his point is right on, right on the money. The can, the, it always seems to be the thing that's missing is what is that consistent statement that we take outside of this room? To the community and how do we effectively, how are we consistent in doing that? Especially kind of given around, is it, is it centered around fundraising? Is it centered around something else? But I, I do think that's a key area. I, I didn't participate in this survey because I'm new to it. But um, just hearing that, and I think that's something that we're really need to think about is what is that consistent message we take out to the community when we were speaking to everybody? So, and somebody has a conversation with me and has a conversation with Aaron, it's like, oh, I heard that previously as to what this is the board's mission. And everybody is aligned behind that. So I do think spending some time thinking about, you know, our mission, vision, values thing. Or how we deliver that effectively to the stakeholders and to others, especially as uh, Tamara commented on earlier, are we thinking about how we reach out better into the business and donor community? And being very consistent in how we do that. I just, I think that's uh, something that we really need to think about as we're looking at. You know, less funding from traditional sources that we've had in the past and how do we generate additional revenue streams? And the board needs to be aligned in that mission and how we effectively communicate that.
May I add one more thing? And this should be actually in support to the president's goal. I mean, they, they don't sit outside in a different bucket. I mean, that's the easy way to start. But it would be helpful to be able to tell an additional stories to that from a board perspective. So we are in, we are supporting president goals and they're highlighted, they're specific, they're doable, they're measurable. And also we have broader voice and story to tell that would be a board story.
Here we're gonna. Vice Chaconia.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, President Ryan.
You know what might be a good sign is when I look at our recommendations for growth. You know, we did three, in my opinion, in this meeting today and, and um, kind of inter, you know, it's interesting. This centralized access to board materials, something, you know, the crew can, can meet on. You know, we do meet regularly, of course, and um, I just thought I'd share that. Cause that seems like a, a positive thing that this is what you were asking for and it happened to actually occur.
Thank you. I'm gonna move us on, my friends. Chris is gonna lead us in a section on high-performing boards, governing with integrity. So this series of topics is designed based on board evaluation to help us to be stronger and more empowered in moving forward with a, as a high-performing board. We're gonna cover a number of evaluation priorities, sort of like a board service 101. To make each of us best in the roles that we have as trustees. Chris, the floor is yours.
Thank you Chairman Deza. I think I'm gonna rearrange what I was gonna talk about just a little bit to follow up on that last comment. For years, we've had our board materials here. Let's see if I can just take you through this. I'm gonna share on the Zoom. So we have had, uh, here it comes. Uh, it's a little hard to see because of the screen size. Make this a little bigger if I can. Yeah, okay. So uh, we have uh, in the past, we've been relying pretty heavily on our board webpages. EOU.edu/governance, too small to read up here, I'm sorry. Uh, but which has this index along the side of where you can find things. So there's, you know, profiles of each of you and the board's meeting schedule for the year. And uh, information about all the materials for every agendas, public notices for every board meeting going back. Uh, the very, the first few years, there isn't much there, but for the last eight or, or seven or eight years, it's all there. Um, and then this one, which has the board statements. But I think um, based on what I'm hearing, that this is still not that convenient uh, for trustees. And I have to kind of remember, right? Because you probably go to the board webpage and you type in, in search bar, board of trustees and then you're hunting around. So uh, and I'm like, uh, so in the past, we, when the board first formed, we had binders for everybody. You got a binder for every board meeting and you had a separate binder that had reference material for the trustees. And so what Susannah and I have done uh, in preparation for this meeting is create a digital reference binder. Uh, and we got that sent to you by email. And I'll show you what's in there right now and then I'll talk a little bit about what else could be there. Uh, give me a moment with the Zoom. Come on Zoom. Ah, here we go. All right, uh, just a moment. Get the right one open. Okay, here we go. So when you click on that link, you will get this Google Drive. And this is what's on it right now. We've got a folder with some AGB resources that includes the essential responsibilities of governing boards and nine principles of trusteeship. That's just the list from the documents. You should all have hard copies of those documents. If you don't, we can send you some. We rely, we refer to those in every board meeting. And then I've placed a couple AGB things that were linked to the, the cover sheet for this item, which is the models of governance and the fiduciary explanation, FAQs on fiduciary responsibilities. And then I also, this one on freedom of expression on campus uh, seemed relevant. I will add things to this over time as they come up. Also, what we have here is a glossary of acronyms. Uh, you hear a lot of acronyms here and um, I think this could use some updating, but it's uh, it's, you know, it's, it's several pages of acronyms. And let's get back to our page here. We've got the uh, same handout that you got today on how, you know, the, this is EOU's shared governance approach to a short way of handling Robert's rules. Uh, and we have um, a flow chart that shows how shared governance operates at the university. So a variety of things. And uh, we also have, I'm not gonna put this on the screen, but the private information we just share with each of you. Uh, about your contact, your private contact information. So that's uh, some of the things that we have here. Also, also have the affirmation of the ethical duties. Now, um, yeah. Susannah quite helpfully had also placed all the board statements and all the board, the committee charters on here. And my first reaction is I don't want them in two places because some will get amended and some won't. But I think we're gonna put that back with, that we'll just have links to the governance page where the item is. So uh, we'll put that back in here so that in more ways than it has been in the past, you'll have a one-stop shop. Now, we're not gonna put all the board materials from all the meetings. I mean, that would, that would get pretty big, uh, unless you really felt a need. But um, the website's still there, so um, you, you know, you can find that stuff that way. So that's, that's a plan for a, a more convenient centralized reference resource. Thanks.
Chris, I, I remember uh, when you said Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, one of the things I did separately with Chris is uh, and I'll just be clear with you all. I told him I don't want to do Robert's Rules of Order for everything. I, I like the informality of how we do things too. I don't mind if we have to do a roll call, all those types of things, but uh, it, I think you gave me a reminder of we don't have to do everything in a parliamentary Robert's Rules of Order way. So he said there is one section where if we're not figuring it out, where we would implement Robert's Rules of Order. So I, I just want Chris to remind us all.
Yes, let me, so um, first, I do want to note that we have gotten, you each have this um, sort of cheat sheet on Robert's rules. Uh, and I did not develop, this was actually developed through our shared governance and it's used by our shared governance. So there's a certain consistency there that we're using that. There were a variety of ones to choose from. There were commercial ones with way too much detail. So that's seemed to me a good starting spot. Uh, board chairs are all receiving this Robert's Rules of Order in brief. And there's also a copy for uh, committee chairs, I should say, all receiving this. There are three for the committee chairs and there's three for George and Christine, uh, and for me. And then we also, actually, you got one Christine? Okay, good. And then uh, we did get the full uh, uh, complete new edition, 12th edition, just a few years old of Robert's rules. Uh, three copies of that. Sorry, George, I'm getting the hardbound one. Uh, the board chair is getting a paper bound one and we're actually gonna have a second one just in case people ask for it. So, uh, but for context on that, uh, turning your attention again to the screen. Once again, this is our governing documents page. And if you click on the bylaws of the university and you scroll down to article. Uh, so yes, uh, article four talks about how the board conducts its affairs. It's the highest level statement of that. There's also board statement number one that does that and some other things. Uh, so this is, you know, how you get a quorum, what do you do if you don't have a quorum? Uh, and we have here, uh, the, the new language, I'm gonna blow this up, sorry, it's too small. Let's blow it up this way. Uh, okay, hey, it's actually legible. This is language the board adopted in February. So this is the most recent amendment to the bylaws. Uh, we're not resolved by reference to Oregon statute or a governing document adopted by the board. Because those are superior in, in authority. Procedural disputes shall be resolved by reference to the most recently available edition of Robert's Rules of Order. As interpreted by the chair. So that's what we've landed on. It does not mean that we're gonna conduct every meeting in exactly the way Robert's rule says. It does leave open the opportunity for a conversation over time about do we want to adopt this practice that I saw in the book that seems like it would make things work better? Uh, that's a conversation we can have, but for our, our framework right now, this is, this is what we've got. Does that answer your question, Chair?
Yes, and just for all of us, um, procedural disputes, I'll just say that. If we have procedural disputes, I think we need to bust out Robert's Rules of Orders and see how the chair interprets that and move forward from there. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Let's see, other fun things to talk about. Uh, uh, before getting into the um, affirmation, uh, there's uh, one other thing that often comes up that I think it's always helpful to have a reminder about. I'll go back to our governing documents and click on board statement number one, conduct of public meetings. And this is about how the board and the committees respond to public comment. Uh, we haven't had a lot of public comment recently, but um, uh, when you do, it's good to sort of, sort of know what the expectation is. So I'm gonna click on this board statement and scroll down to, I believe it's section eight. Yes, so we've got uh, this discussion about, once again, maybe make this large enough so you can actually see what we're talking about. Okay, that's a little better. Do I could do one more? Yes, okay. So we, as you're aware, we provide a lot of means for oral public comment. People can zoom in and give oral public comment if they have made arrangements ahead of time. We invite that as public, our public notice. People can um, reserve, tell us ahead of time, they're gonna give in-person public comment. And uh, they also, we actually will accommodate folks who just show up. But the question is, uh, and so also we have a general public comment period. But we have established the tradition, which is now here, that we will allow public comment during any agenda item if it's pertinent to that agenda item. Uh, but the real question is what happens when you've, someone's gotten up and they've actually made a comment? And that's this section eight point seven. So, and what this says is it makes a distinction between committee meetings and full board meetings. Uh, and in committee meetings, which are a little more of a workshop style, uh, it's where the ideas get generated and vetted before being sent to the full board. Um, we are, we accommodate a little more give and take, uh, including conversations uh, to some degree uh, between commenters and the committee members around a top particular topic that was of interest enough that someone came to the meeting. Of course, the committee chair is always in charge of how far that goes. And uh, we do note it's important that it not take on the tone of a negotiation because that's not what it is. But at full board meetings, uh, and partly because we've already provided that opportunity at the committee level. At full board meetings, the board is not expected to respond to comments that are given. Uh, and in fact, at larger institutions, it's a hard and fast rule. They just don't. There's a, there will be after-the-fact follow-up by an appropriate staff person or officer. But um, you know, places like PSU or UFO, uh, they may have dozens of commenters all angry about the same thing. Uh, it's not a conversation. It's, okay, this was your opportunity to tell us stuff and now we're, we will, we, we were gonna go on with our thing. And so that's really what we have for our rule here. Uh, trustees should not, at board meetings, trustees should not respond to commenters. The chair may respond or ask a knowledgeable person to respond if it appears that a known expeditions response is and meet, will immediately address the commenter's concern. And you can imagine what that is. Oh yes, you know, we voted on that at the last board meeting. Uh, here's, you know, where you can find the minutes. Um, but anything more than that, it's an, it's an after-the-fact as much as two weeks later. And that's partly because you may get comments about anything. No one in the room may actually be prepared to respond to that comment on TV forever. So a certain reticence is really appropriate. Okay, with that, are there any questions, comments around that? Okay, so next, uh, I did emphasize in the cover sheet, I really emphasized the affirmation of the uh, ethical dues of trusteeship and I gave some reasons why. Um, let's make this big enough to see. Oh, it's not tracking. I'll have to stop the share and come back just a moment. Well, this is not good. Okay, here we go. There we go, all right. So this is actually, the board evolved this document over four different board actions. Uh, it first adopted in a standalone resolution in twenty six. It first adopted in a standalone resolution in 2016. Uh, it made, uh, some changes to it in another resolution in 2020. Uh, and then in 2022, it took it from an attachment to a resolution to an appendix to board statement number six, which is the very long board statement, 13 pages on, on trustee ethics. And, uh, in many ways, the value of this statement, let me make it just a little larger again. Is that's going to work? Nope, that's too big, okay. Is, it is a real condensation of what we really mean by good board culture. How trustees are, the standards trustees hold themselves to for how we interact. And so also for that reason, we have the annual requirement that people sign it. All trustees sign it at the beginning of the fiscal year, because it's the, the shortest condensation we've got. And we think it's, you know, a pretty good condensation. So it does start off with this discussion about roles. And including that of the board and of individual trustees, and where we get our ethics requirements. And then it gets down to brass tacks. So the first is just, uh, we, there's a, the shortest statement we've got on what the fiduciary duties are. We talk a lot about fiduciary responsibility. I think we have a general idea of what it means. During orientation, I talked to you as being analogous to literal trustees for an estate or something like that, where there's a resource, it's you're responsible for conserving and growing for the benefit of someone else. And in this case, the resource is the university and the benefit is the, the benefitted of people of Oregon. But this discussion sort of gets down to what specifically those duties mean. And so using prudence, uh, and diligence, care and skill, because this is serious matter. Uh, so it's basically about taking this work seriously. Duty of loyalty, this really gets to issues of conflict of interest. And being clear that when doing this work here, the work of board, the interests of the people of Oregon and the preservation of the university are your highest duty. And then the duty of obedience, which in some ways is a subset of the first two, uh, that, um, you know, we have rules, uh, we've already adopted or we're subject to by the legislature and we're going to follow them. So that's really a condensation of what we talk about. We're talking about fiduciary duties. All seems like pretty common sense. It's fiduciary, the word fiduciary has so many syllables and it's not commonly used, but it's not a great shorthand for what is really, uh, care and loyalty. And yes, following the rules. We really get into the details, specific details in the following sections on service and respect and personal behavior. And, uh, the first I'll note is service is broken down to things that trustees must do and to things that trustees are generally expected to do. Uh, and that's an important distinction in this list. So things are required, you are requiring yourselves to do is making this service a high personal priority. Uh, when recruiting the first trustees, they were actually asked that whatever other volunteer work they do, this would be their number one, their top priority. I don't think we've consistently asked that of subsequent trustees, but this is kind of the idea. And, uh, actually participate in the work of the board and its committees, preparing for committees by reading materials and keeping informed about the status of the university and trends and issues in higher education. And, uh, and this is emphasized in a variety of places in here, using your own judgment, uh, when voting. That's a pretty good set of requirements. And then the shoulds are more just sort of, sort of cultural standards. You know, uh, you're encouraged to accept leadership positions. You're encouraged to support the university generally, participate in events. And, uh, and so forth. I won't go through the whole thing. Oh, and yes, this last one was actually one of the most recent amendments to this. I think it was in 2020 or 2022. I recognize that I'm encouraged to financially support the university at a level that is meaningful to me commensurate with my needs. This is an acknowledgement that some of our trustees are currently students. And 20 bucks might be, uh, meaningful and commensurate, uh, and other trustees. So it's not an attempt to set an actual numerical standard. But this, this was added because it was recognized that for, uh, things like grant applications by the universities and others, there, there's often a question, how much does your governing body actually contribute? And they want to see a hundred percent. And if you say it's eighty percent or something like that, that's not the right answer. So that's why this is here. Um, and that's, I guess, all I'll say about that, unless there's a question.
Chris, some of the material we, we got, um, really surprised me in that since we added this, it looked to me like the board giving had actually decreased. So I'm not sure that we accomplished the goal. We might want to, we might want to look, look at that. I, I really, um, liked the part about meaningful contribution. I thi- I think that's important, but, but, um, I, I was, I was just surprised by that. Looked like it'd gone down the last couple of years.
I think I've had conversations with Tim around this, uh, in the past. Yeah, there you are. Feel free to come up if you'd like, Tim. I, I think part of the question is how hard to push trustees on this.
Uh, yes, historically, when this board was started, it was made very clear and it's in the notes and that this is not a donor board. There was quite a bit of, of active not, this is not what we do as fundraising. We're not a fundraising board for this governing board. We didn't go out and particularly recruit people to be on the board with high donor capacity. That was seen as something that the foundation needed, needed to work on, much to my, you know. But we've moved forward past that. I think there was an implicit idea that we're different than the University of Oregon or the larger, have more, more donors involved with them, that we're a governing board. But that's changed over time as, as there, as the trustees have evolved and others have said, hey, we'd like to contribute, like to be part of this. Um, and I think to the point that, that Chris was, uh, talking about with other foundations and organizations asking, are we, you know, are your boards giving? They do look at that. And there's two ways you can look at it, you know, is everybody on your board a donor? Meaning have they given something in the past or are they, you know, are they versus are they a current donor? Which is, have they given maybe in the last fiscal year? Um, so you count that two different ways. But, um, if you can get to that 100% mark and say, yes, everybody on our boards has given or is a donor, that's always a very good sign going into any campaign or when you're talking to other foundation or funding organizations.
May I add something to it? During that discussion in 2020, we actually asked, uh, uh, some help in calculating how many hours a trustee is investing in this. At the rate recognized in Oregon at thirty-four point forty-six dollars per hour, that calculation was made, it came up, I don't remember exactly the number, but two hundred, two hundred and fifty. If you multiply that, that's what we recognize when we write grants. It's called the in-kind part. And that when you volunteer one hour of your time, you're giving money to that organization. Uh, that's part of philanthropy, what we do. So yes to that and yes to the fact that the trustees are investing, in-kind donation of their volunteer time to the board.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that, Mauricio. We actually did do a calculation. We did our best estimate of what we're asking trustees to do. It worked out to about 11 hours a month, uh, which is a big investment. It's a big ask. So, um, yeah, I don't know how that works with what you're doing, Tim, but.
It does usually, we use it calculate time, talent and treasure, um, in those, in those numbers. And I mean, just to put a finer point on it, the foundations that I've worked with and, and other donors do ask, how much are you actually, is there giving? Because we could calculate with our alumni board, how much time they give, and they are actually donors. We can calculate with the foundation board, how much time they do. But we also usually get asked, that's great. I know there everybody's, you're, you know, you're making the trip, you're, you know, you're getting, um, uh, you're getting to the board meetings, you're involved with your hours there. But are they giving? And that's where, it doesn't have to be in this board, doesn't set it. Private institutions I've worked at have a threshold, you must give X amount of dollars outside of students and, and say alumni trustees or others. But, um, uh, if there's giving at any level, we can get to that 100% mark, um, in terms of philanthropy, the actual giving. And we can calculate up the donor numbers, um, too, in terms of hours served.
So I do want to note, I'm just about done with my allotted time. And, uh, so I, but let's go ahead. Yes, sorry.
Um, I just, I wanted to say, so, um, not being an alumni of EOU, my alma mater does not hesitate or miss an opportunity, right? In reach outs and I see, and there's periods of time, just like we do with our alumni, where it's like, okay, it's the alumni giving period of time and I get emails. Um, I also have a standing bet with my grandfather, who was a different alma mater on football every year. And I, he donates on my behalf every year to my alma mater, because we win. So, you know, so, but the point being kind of tying back to Cedric's point, or Cedric's point earlier, actually is that it would be super helpful for me, because it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, because I don't get the alumni or that kind of. So if it's mixed into the info lines, I apologize. But it would be helpful just annually, maybe this time of year, to have a board specific, hey, if you're interested, here's kind of where you go in a direct path. So I don't have to remember based on this conversation that we have kind of annually. And then after the meeting, remember that I needed to remember to go find that online. So it'd be helpful if I just had a direct email that said, you know, especially Chuck's not slinging rocks one year. There, it was helpful, but I mean, it was helpful, just kind of that concrete. But something that like gives us that tangible moment, because I think if we just, I mean, obviously there's a balance there, but it would be helpful to me if once a year, kind of around retreat time, hey, remember it's a valuable thing for the board to put some financial weight, to whatever degree that means for you. I just, I don't know that there's ever that email or direct link, here's where you go to do that. That would be certainly helpful.
Yeah, I believe we did that last year and you'll be getting another letter this year.
Perfect.
From the foundation, asking you to participate in giving, we usually do it in the fall, in the early fall. So you will be getting that.
I probably did that when I got the letter.
And we, it did result in, in a number of gifts.
Perfect.
All right, well, I'll just wrap up. Each of these sentences were actually thought through with some care. Probably the last thing I'll leave you with is at the, uh, and much of what we've already talked about is covered under respect, supporting the president, um, speaking candidly, but also supporting actions approved by the board, even if you didn't vote for them. Those are pretty important. Uh, and then finally, um, this is a particularly, conflicts of interest are usually talked about in terms of financial conflicts of interest. You know, I work for this company that also contracts with the university, that kind of thing. But I actually think that where it comes up the most here is we do have trustees who are staff, who are faculty, who are students. And, um, there are a variety of places in our materials and also in here that emphasizes that all trustees are the same. They're trustees, your role here as a trustee is frankly, um, it's a different, it, it's not representative. Uh, and, um, so while people bring, eat, uh, those folks, just like all the rest of you, bring expertise from their work that informs the conversations of the board. They are not representatives of those groups. They are trustees like everyone else. And with that, I'll wrap up.
I am just reading and I appreciate you putting in, I just, I must avoid personal agendas or appearing to be a representative of any internal, external constituency, group, cause, community or constituent part of an institution. I must avoid requesting special considerations or favors, which I, I'll just say, I, I think we're back to that. We do a really good job of that, but stay, stay in above it all, or stay in big picture.
And that AGB attachment about high performing boards governing with integrity, that really gets to this point. That the loyalty, the duty of loyalty is to the institution, to the, the role as a fiduciary. In a sense, this last sentence sort of wraps up everything that went before.
Thank you, Secretary Burford. Thank you trustees, um, for your time, focus, energy and your discussions on this, on these topics. We are going to take a break. And in around 10 minutes, we're going to have, uh, Dr. Ryan, as well as Mary Moller. And they're going to start talking to us about, uh, public universities and some of the work that's taking place, um, at least from the director's standpoint. Let's take at least 10 minutes. All right, trustees, welcome back. We're going to focus on the Coalition of Oregon Public Universities Executive Director. Trustees over the past year, the Oregon Council of Presidents has gone through a transformation. The council has a new name and a new executive director. President Ryan will introduce us to both of them. To, to introduce us to them both, although I don't know why it says them both, but.
It's okay.
We got President Ryan and it's really nice to have you. I don't have your name in front of me.
Mary.
Mary Muller, thank you.
So, um, over the last year, the, um, former Oregon Council of Presidents has really been digging into the organization. And rethinking it, its basic premise. Um, it was primarily operating, I think, as an intermediary between the public universities and tech. And, um, we are shifting gears a little bit. And as such, we also wanted to change the name of the organization. And so we're in the process of this change to the Coalition of Oregon's Public Universities. And part of that change involved bringing in new leadership and new vision for the organization. And that's where Ms. Mary Muller comes in. And so I'm really excited to introduce her to you so that she can share a little bit of her background. You'll hear about some of her background in higher education and the state. Um, as well as some of the future directions. And I know she'd be eager to answer any questions you have.
Well, I'm really glad to be here. Thank you so much. For the record, Mary Muller, uh, the Coalition of Oregon Public Universities. Um, I'm a month in, so, uh, very new, but very excited. But like President Ryan mentioned, I am, um, coming back to higher education. Uh, I, uh, worked for Portland State University for seven and a half years. After I had worked, uh, in DC, uh, for about five years, I worked on Capitol Hill and worked for a congressman there. And then after Portland State, I actually went to the state of Oregon and worked for Governor Kate Brown as her executive appointments director. So worked on, uh, appointing to trustees and others to, uh, the number of boards and commissions that the state of Oregon has. I think we're like at 300 now. It's a lot. And, uh, worked for her for about five and a half years and then worked for a couple of agencies. I was the deputy director at the Department of Consumer and Business Services. And then most recently at the, uh, Department of Administrative Services, I was the chief of strategic initiatives and enterprise accountability. So pretty long title. Uh, but did, uh, work on, uh, a lot of great, uh, things for the state there. Um, so glad to be back in higher education, really excited about this opportunity. And like President Ryan mentioned, I think, uh, you know, the former executive director. Um, and direction of the organization was definitely focused on compliance and policy in some coordination. And I think, uh, the current presidents of our public universities want to go in a little bit of a different direction. Um, and, and that's where I come in. I'm, I'm, I'm going to be a different person than that other executive director and, um, I bring my, uh, experience with advocacy and coalition building. And that's really what, uh, I think we, we want to focus on. That's really the vision that, um, we want to, uh, go down a different path where we're talking about coordinated, uh, strategic advocacy. And not that we hadn't been doing that before, um, but there's probably, um, some areas that we can improve upon that. Just even just, um, uh, being a lot more focused and disciplined about the things that, uh, we go to. This, to Salem and our legislators for, um, also working on building our narrative, you know? As you all know, um, really focused on Eastern Oregon University and talking about the story, right, is really important. Um, but what's our collective narrative? Is it transparent? Is it authentic? Is it resonating? And do we have the right messengers, right? Do we have those third party validators? And I think that that's an area that we can improve on. Um, and that's really where I'll be really focusing a lot of my time on relationship and coalition building. So really excited to be on campus today. I'm meeting with a lot of folks, um, here. Um, and, uh, we'll be doing campus visits to all the universities. Back in the day, when I was the chair of the Oregon Student Association, um, I went to all the campuses a lot. So it's been a minute since I've been on this camp. It's beautiful. It looks great. So I'm really excited to get on campus and, and meet, uh, not just campus leaders, but also, uh, stakeholders. That will have a lot of impact on our advocacy efforts and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think my first, number one, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing and how you're going to help to organize. I was thinking about your relationship with Heck and Ben Cannon and how that may intersect. I'm sure you're going to spend a lot of time talking or discussing or supporting or not supporting certain things. Can you talk about that?
Sure. Uh, well, good news is Ben and I have known each other for many years. So that's, uh, that helps and hurts, I bet, right? Um, but I think it mostly helps. And the, what I think I bring to the table is I have been working in state government. And I, I've worked for, uh, uh, being a regulator. And that's what Ben is, a regulator, right? I mean, that's his role. Um, he also cares and he wants, I, I, I think he truly is, um, he truly cares about public higher, higher education. So I think my strategy really will be to focus on the things that we can work on, um, but also making sure that he understands. And has the full, uh, background from the campuses point of view. And I think what I, I want to make sure that we focus on with Ben Cannon and the Higher Education Coordinated Commission. Is really more the commission, right? The commission has, um, is very important and building out those relationships, I think, really matter. And really focusing on the things that, um, that we need to focus on. I, I, I'm going to, you're going to probably hear me say this a lot. I, we do not need to be spinning our wheels about things that have no legs and, and there's no power in it. And there will be no impact. And sometimes that happens, and especially with state agencies as a former, uh, state bureaucrat. We meet a lot. We spin our wheels a lot. So let's just, I, I want to make sure that we're thinking through that impact and what. What's more bang for our buck on the things that we need to accomplish?
I guess too, I could follow up and share that, um, Ben came to our O P U meeting. Uh, just when, I don't know, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, and, and actually stayed the whole time. And so I think that's good. Yes, definitely. I agree with you. I think, and that's an important thing for us to consider. It is a compliance based organization. But I think that kind of relationship building, you know, some of the presidents kind of call and text and, and stuff like that. And you can assume I'm that person that, that does that with Ben. But I think that having him in a group is important. We had a consultant in that day as well, who kind of shared the perception of the Oregon Public Universities. And there is work to be done in the messaging components and letting people know we're actually a highly functional group. And I think the hiring of Mary and the re-envisioning of this organization is a testament to how well Oregon's Public University presidents have been. Have been working together because most of us have been here two years at this point, some a little longer. And we stepped down and immediately were like, okay, let's, 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 let's do something a little different.
Vice Chair Cronin.
Um, I'm going to drill into that just a little bit because of course the perception is that there, we, we have seven public universities. They're very different and we talk over here, uh, about the two bigs and then the four truths. So I, I guess I'm interested to see and happy to hear that there's a coalition. But I'm interested, interested to see if you feel like you're going to be able to represent all seven and have a collective voice. Cause that, that would be great. It, it isn't actually what I think has really happened a lot. So I'm, could, could we talk, maybe it's too early, but could we talk a little bit about a couple of ideas?
Yeah, I mean, I, let, I'm not a Pollyanna in a way that I don't think this, this is a heavy lift, right? There, we do have a lot of regional differences and also that's what makes us great, right? Those, those are the things to be celebrated. I think what I'm really going to try to focus on, it, it, it sounds like we brought a lot of priorities the last session. And they, they probably were all great. I would say we, we really do need to prioritize even more. We need to focus. And part of that is building a muscle around discipline. It is really hard to start off with a lot of wants and needs. And also very different wants and needs and get to that, you know, consistent message. I, I'm going to be pretty strong. I'm going to have to show up every day and remind the group. And I actually think this is a willing group. I think that's part of the secret sauce. They, they want to do something different. And you know, the, the old saying goes, right? If you keep doing something the same and it doesn't change, you're, it's like the level of insanity or whatever. We need to, we need to change and shift how we show up. I think the other thing that I'm going to really, uh, encourage and advise around is. I think we could be doing a better job of communicating our narrative around ROI and why we're such a good deal. Right? We're a good deal and we do really great things. And how can we talk about that collectively and talk about our impact collectively? That is resonating and really, and also understanding the mechanics of universities. We have a lot of new legislators who need more background. And I, we last year had a transition and we probably didn't have as much time. And with, uh, with having an executive director there, being able to say, oh, okay, you're not really tracking this. So let's, let's figure out how to better communicate that, you know? When I just actually reviewed the ways and means hearing that President Ryan, uh, presented and, and she got a lot of hard questions. She handles it beautifully. Um, but those questions told me a lot about where the legislators are. I'm like, oh, so light bulb went off of like, I, I think there's some, I think there's some low hanging fruit is what really bottom line.
Music to my ears, um, because, but, uh, you know, it's that, it's been that way from public education, K, K through 20 really. And so, um, I, I, I think that that is going to be the challenge is to, to try to get a cohesive voice. And if you, if you can do that, I think being able to tell a single story about the value of higher education to our population. I just opened up my Facebook, uh, last night and there was this big, long article about the, you know, the alternative. Boy, my, my kids aren't going to waste their money on, you know, higher ed. And it's like, oh my gosh. Uh, so there, there's really a, an, an important story that must be told. It's in my, in my view, it's urgent because we're going to lose, we're going to lose our ability as a state to compete. to compete and to function in the world if we don't have educated people, college educated people.
And it's not or, it's and, right? It's, it's all, we need all of it. Like we can't, we can't solve it all. The community colleges can't solve it all, the trades can't solve it all. We, we have to collectively solve it.
All are, all are valuable, they need to be recognized as that.
Trustee Valerio.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. That's so wonderful to know that there is such a thing as a group that really think together about this idea of public universities. I would like to reflect a moment in something you said, you use that word ROI. And this is true, this something especially when it comes to higher level legislator or not, it's important. But we also should remember that education should not be an ROI position. So equity dictates, if we really are committed to that, there is no ROI in equity at all. We are not investing in equity because we have a return on that investment. There is an ethical commitment to that, but not an investment-related commitment. So I guess this thing, I mean, because when we read the, the ranking, it doesn't help the work we do. We heard it two or three times later, forty-six of the fifty, so. So I guess, I guess that that is, the elevate, elevating that number to a higher level of ranking really is investing in the equity of education.
That's right.
At higher level.
And I would actually argue that the, the equity is a return, it's just not ten dollars. Yeah, exactly.
You know, the tangible return and sometimes it's hard to be shown with numbers, but the return is there.
But it is, yeah, but it is, it is positive and valuable, that's right.
Thank you.
Trustee Lehrer.
Yeah, so I really appreciate too, kind of the lens you're bringing in bridging this coordination. You know, I've mentioned in the past, I think what K-12 does really well is size agnostic. There's like a one story that hits the lobby. And I think that's been my wondering in higher education is kind of have the trues and PSU almost running at times in conflict with the other public universities, the bigs, the two bigs. But taking that out, and so I, I loved your answer earlier about how kind of bringing some universality to the university story as a whole and that there's this space kind of where all of the same goals can be in mind. Because it gets really hard to communicate to legislators the nuance of why we would kind of approach that story in different ways depending on where it sits. So then expanding that out, what is your dynamic right now with like the community, community college piece of that puzzle? Because I think it needs to be drawn in and I think that there has been a bit of a separation within legislators' minds. And I mean, we've seen that a lot. There's this really large investment at times into the community college space. And then our university systems aren't getting some of that same thing. So it seems like that alignment across higher ed would be helpful to say, just like what Maurizio said or what you've said, it's that and. So how are we coordinating so that it's seen as an and, not an or, whether we're investing in community colleges or universities?
Yeah, I think another tough thing to solve, right? I think that there is some dynamics that are existing around just community colleges are very well liked, right? I don't think that's going to be a shock to anyone in this room. And I think their advocacy probably looks different than ours right now because they have built up some great reputation. And we've got some work to do there. But I think where I see opportunity is on campuses and our, and our partners, our community college partners, partners in the area, we get along. And there's really great stories of partnership. It's when we get into that building that things start, there's some tension. And so I think it's a tough nut to crack, but I, I think it's, we need to uplift more of the where we do get along in that partnership and highlight that. I would, I rather, I don't really want to focus on, are we disagreeing in this building? Because part of it is strategy and politics, right? But I do think the more that we can uplift the partnerships that are, are happening, because I know they're happening here, I know they're happening at the regionals. I know that they're happening at U of O and OSU. So I think my strategy will be let's uplift those and have them consistently talking about the positives to outweigh that perception. Because I actually don't think it's real. So that will be part of my strategy to really seek out those positive interactions and show that we are really actual partners and that we, we do like each other.
Time for one more question. Trustee Smith.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just curious how the funding comes together for the coalition.
Sure. Each campus contributes and it's, it's a calculation based on the PUSF. There's a base rate, base rate, and then there's addition based on the PUSF. And we haven't decided this year's dues by, yeah, yeah, a collective.
Is it just you?
Yes, she's like, right now it is.
There was a staff of, what was it, four or five in the past? And you know, over the course of last year, as we were really re-envisioning what this could look like. You know, we, we got down to one and then moved to Mali. And so wanted to have, it's important to build your own team, it is, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, well, Mary, Mary Muller, Muller, with a Muller?
Muller.
Muller. I'll just say, welcome and we're glad that you're here. I'm glad that you made the time to meet us and for us to get to know you and for the relationship that we're going to have. I'll leave you with this, I could have asked it in a question format, but just I'll ask it from a advocacy standpoint. Please honor, support and defend this university. We're Oregon's rural university, so we're going to need you as best that you can to take care of everybody, but especially look out for Eastern Oregon.
Happy to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Okay, so we're going to get into strategic direction, goals and priorities for the academic year twenty-five, twenty-six. President Ryan, soon after President Ryan arrived, she began a collaborative process to develop strategies and goals to implement for ASCENT 2029 strategic framework. President Ryan will now update us on those efforts and propose some new initiatives. President Ryan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I just remembered a moment ago that Chris told me a week ago that I should remind you that we have a website devoted to our goals and strategies and we keep them updated. And so I forgot to do that. So I'll, I'll send y'all a little email link after this or maybe even Kimberly and I are working right now to update the website. So, so we'll get that back to you. But I'll go ahead and, and the same thing as yesterday, move full steam ahead. So this year I'm really focusing on four key areas. The first is the one that you've heard the most from me since I arrived. Student experience and success has been my number one goal since, since I arrived. And it's been an incredible amount of both administrative, administrative work and collaborative work across the university, building partnerships and thought processes around student experience and success. And of course, those relate to our KPIs around retention rates and completion. And it is and should always be the number one goal of a university. The second, which we're keeping a keen eye on is our enrollment growth. And, and I think it's important to talk about maintenance in the world that we're in today. We talked a lot about uncertainty this year in, in the enrollment funnels. And so really important to, to just keep an eye on, on that piece. And that KPI relates to growing the number of students that we serve. Relevance is something new in, in the four goals that, or four, three or four that I work on every year. And this really relates to this moment in time that we're in, this buildup from the pandemic to now with something we talked a lot about yesterday, which is what is the value of higher education? You know, how do we share that in rural spaces? How do we make sure that our community-engaged campus is well-known for that particular thing? Are we working on career decidedness and development of our students? And you can see KPIs related to that there as well. And then finally, as we talked about yesterday, we must continue to stay focused on our fiscal sustainability and, and those relate to those KPIs there. One thing that you're not seeing here that I, I do want to acknowledge is that, you know, since I arrived, I have made our university welfare and campus life one of my top priorities of the year. And I think that's part of kind of who I am in my DNA. That's always going to be part of, of what I'm working on. But I am at the point now where I do believe we have some foundational work in place with our shared governance processes, our appreciation events and messaging, establishing feedback loops on projects, delivery of professional development and advanced communication over the past two years. So does this mean that everyone's happy with where we are? No, right? That, that's not, not what I'm saying. I personally believe that the time is right for EOU to be focused on solution-oriented problems that we face externally. And of course, continuing to look at internal issues. But we really have a larger issue externally than internally, in my opinion, at this point. Higher education is changing fast and it has been since the pandemic. Polls of higher education professionals across the United States among staff and faculty show declining rates of happiness in people's chosen careers and professions. And of course, that naturally relates to the value that we are perceived to have as an institution of higher education. There's no way you can really separate those two things. In addition, we have, you know, increased advances in digital access, disagreements about the role of AI. And all of this has an impact on our employees of varying categories. And this move in particular to online education, you know, video conferencing and Zoom, which has been fully embraced by Gen Z, just means that there are differences in the way we work. And that has been hard on our employees who perceive value in those relationships in different ways, right? So this is a, you know, I think this, this value of higher ed plus these changes in higher education, they have a weight to them. I'm keenly aware of them, I am, you know, I've been in the business for over eighteen years now and I experienced them myself as this has, as this has transformed. So again, I'm keeping a keen eye on this. I am a personal approach person, but the house is not on fire because of internal issues at this point, in my opinion. We have started a lot of new work in that area and we have to stay the course. We really must stay the course, continue to listen, continue to grow, continually professionally develop as leaders and, and have frank conversations. But I think it is time for EOU to come together again towards solution-oriented problems that we face externally rather than internally. So to that end, I'll share with you what I'm looking at. So based on that collaborative approach that we had towards building strategies, this is a list of projects that we worked on this year. I don't know that we've shared much with you about our HOPE redesign and the engagement of students in conversations about what they want the student center to look like. And so over the summer, we did just that with the help of our terrific facilities team. They're redesigning that space to make it, you know, more engaging. Right now, Vice, our Provost and Vice President of Student Affairs are, you know, talking with advising about some of the projects they've been working on. They had a tremendous lift this year in looking at early first year scheduling and now moving to multi-term scheduling. So again, always trying to advance the enterprise and this is about retention and persistence. So, so incredible, incredible work. We've redesigned Mountaineer Days beyond just being registration events to create that sense of belonging and affinity with our campus. And hopefully also eventually LaGrande and in Union County for those who are in place. The Mountaineer Information Center was launched, as were the success guides. And I ran a committee that was supposed to operate for three, but ended up taking the whole year to look at admissions standards. And so you'll be hearing, actually, I guess that doesn't come to you, but we'll be looking at admission standards this year through our shared governance processes after a very extensive look at it. Major projects that we're undertaking this year include the Academic Master Plan, which gives faculty data on each of their academic programs and asks them to assess themselves and create plans for the future. But it also helps us understand what are there in terms of areas of need in the community that we're currently underserving? And so there are going to be a couple of committees this year that take a look at the two facets of academic life on campus. We have a new enrollment management team coming together. This will be co-chaired by the Vice President for Student Affairs and the Provost, who have asked to look at about nine key issues that are critical for us to tackle in the coming years. You heard yesterday that we're beginning very early stages of our capital campaign design. That's going to be a longer term process. And I could have put evaluate general education on any number of slides when you look at dates because they've been doing it for a wee bit of time now and will continue to be working on it this year. You may recall Kevin Walker's comments earlier, so you know, that's happening. We have really tried to study our student communication campaign and gather more data around it to be more effective. So Vice President of Student Affairs is also looking at using our slate system to see, you know, what's being open? What's not open? How can we, we better deliver information to our students in ways that they're going to be able to digest it? And one of the things that they've started doing is they've created a ChatGPT. Justin Montgomery did this, our Director of Marketing and Public Relations. And he's basically given, for example, financial aid, the ability to use a ChatGPT to create more student-friendly messaging. Financial aid's hard, right? There's a lot of words that, that people don't understand and he's already gotten a lot of great, great work around that. So pretty exciting. Our website redesign and value prop work is well underway and our VPFA is also looking at our financial aid. Under the, what I would call broadly relevance is, there's going to be a major push this year. The big beautiful bill does require that universities have outcomes that are better than the degree under them to receive federal funding. And of course, EOU is, has those outcomes now. But it is also part of our strategic plan, the original strategic plan, that, that students have the skills and career decidedness through their curriculum. And so we'll be emphasizing that this year. There are federal laws about digital accessibility that are supposed to make our Canvas sites, that's our student learning management system, that, that all of those, all of these applications need to be used by, by even people who are disabled. How will the blind access course materials? How will the hearing impaired access course materials? But it also pertains to anything on our website, right? So making our website more accessible. And this fits well with our redesign work in any case. And we're even trying to adopt this at, at levels like what about our meetings? How can we make our documents for meetings digitally accessible as well? You know, our relevance also matters when we talk about our stopouts. People who, who leave the university, most often because of our rural environment, they're not going anywhere else. We have a really keen need to stay on top of that. Every time someone walks away from university with a few credits that didn't complete, they're not getting the return on their investment outside of the items you, you suggested, Maurizio or Trustee Valerio, I always forget to do last names. So, so we really are going to try and, and work on that particular piece as well, both through advising and through a particular position that we've designated in Pendleton. We continue to have transfer opportunities. One of the greatest criticisms that I hear when I'm in Salem is how hard it is to transfer. You may recall yesterday, I, I noted that we have an award for transfer. This is a miscommunication to a certain extent, but it also, there's a ton of opportunity out there. And Carrie and Peter were just talking about one of those yesterday. And then in terms of relevance, we need to be able to better share our data, both internally and externally. The VPFA and Provost are working on a pretty major project. We had an audit, well, two actually, last year around our data and how we can better serve our internal and external community. And so we're rebuilding And so we're rebuilding the governance structure around that. And we're going to create some shared dashboards that allow us to pay even greater attention to student success metrics, among others. And finally, of course, we're advancing our work around PR and community engagement. They need to know what we're doing. It's hard because of, you know, this lack of a, of a single media landscape. It's hard to get your message out there. But we are going to continue to work closely on, on PR and community engagement. One of the things I'm going to be clear with our community internally as we begin to push a little bit around this is community engagement doesn't mean that we do everything for everybody. We really are a small organization, and we have to pick and choose around a few target areas. If EOU can't be at X, it doesn't mean that we don't care about X. It's just very difficult as a small organization to be everywhere at the same time. Tim and I are two people, not fifty, right? And then even filling out, for example, if you take the Union County Fair, it's very difficult to get people, you know, in that space for, you know, X number of days and X number of hours. So we really need to think about where are the spaces where we can be most effective? We cannot, and, and it's the same thing with the Academic Master Plan, right? We can't be everything to everybody. Let's be really good at a few things and be reliable and trustworthy in those areas. So those are our major projects this year. It's a lot, I know, I know, yeah. But, but it's important work, and it's good work, and it's, it's, it's the stuff you feel good about.
Trustee Lear.
Dr. Ryan, thank you for that. And I, two things that I noticed. One, I really appreciate the articulation of the slight nuanced shift. And I think it's a valuable shift. I think it's an important one, and it aligns really closely to the conversation yesterday around where we're at in kind of the variables impacting the university. It's, it's very external. I mean, these last two days have really brought a lot of clarity there. So I appreciate the alignment of that focus. The other thing that I'm struck by is how many of those words were sort of organically brought up in our, I mean, I'm looking through thinking, well, did you just make these slides after you got the notes from the conversations yesterday? But I know, you know, so I think that there's just a lot of like fissure points here that are all kind of coming together, which usually indicates that you're on the right track. And, you know, when a body of people are kind of tracking all the same things at the same time, it's a good sign. So thank you for that. I love where we're headed.
It, it's funny you mention that because in our group yesterday, Group, Group One or Group Number One, we, just kidding. We, I literally mentioned that as I was hearing from folks. I was like, this is so ironic because one of my themes for this year is, is relevancy.
Trustee Gigan.
Thank you, Chairman Doza, and thank you for that, for that narrative. That was very helpful. Just a quick follow-up question. With regard to accessibility, I know that there's been a great charge amongst faculty throughout campus to ensure that their courses are compliant with that, meeting a hundred percent standard. And I know that that's an objective. But you also mentioned that it wasn't just the courses that we were seeking. It was the meetings and, and basically anything online really should, should be that way. So I just wanted to ask, in your mind, what is the goal? You know, do you expect to have the university, including meetings and everything, a hundred percent accessible in, say, two years, two and a half years, three years? What's the plan?
So we have until 2026, I think June 2026, to be in compliance with our website, any public facing documents and the courses, right? The other stuff doesn't require that level of accessibility, right? But I work alongside hearing impaired individuals and sight impaired individuals every day. So I personally believe as the leader of this university, it is my role to extend the knowledges I've gained just from those intimate working relationships to the rest of the university. I see that we have a bunch of people who don't always share, for example, their, their disabilities. And I think the university does best by its employees when we consistently deliberate on that and create accessible documents. Will every single small faculty gathering or meeting that occurs follow these best practices? Probably not, but it behooves me as a leader to make sure the trainings are there and the, the mindset is there, right? That, that I'm sharing, this is meaningful and valuable that, for example, we have captions on videos because people just kind of need it. There are going to be trainings. Our Digital Accessibility Crew has been working over the summer. There's, there's two committees that have been working on it, and they're going to be delivering trainings to folks throughout the year, some specific to, as you mentioned, course design, but others related to the larger issues within the field. I would love to see the entire university get there by 2026 because we're certainly delivering all of the training this year. But I know that there's going to be, you know, there's always, with any project that we do, there's always the people who run full steam towards it and those who kind of put their head in the sand. I'm hoping more of us run full steam because there's a lot of value in it.
Chair, I'll just note that there, the staff cover sheet has the links to the webpage that the president alluded to, so you can get the full picture there.
Kelly, real quick, one thing I'll say to you publicly. I don't know if you can tell, Dr. Ryan's very driven. She likes better. She likes things to improve. Sometimes I wonder, like, I was looking at the, the staff in the back, like, is that a lot of work? You know, how much, how much, how much support, you know, how much initiative, all these types of things. My sense too, getting to know you better, Dr. Ryan, is you're really good at team or building team and getting people to, to understand and to move forward. So just thank for you and impressed.
Well, I appreciate that you acknowledged my colleagues behind me. We recently, to the earlier conversation, one of the things we're doing as a leadership team this summer is we've engaged in a study of ourselves and how to, for example, in, in just another two weeks, we're going to undergo some training about change management as a leadership team. And as part of that, we've all taken a survey, one on our own personal temperaments and style, and then another that collaborates on, that, that brings all of our personality types together and shows exactly where we fall on, on these spectrums. And I believe that though the leadership team may not have seen my results before that moment, it was very clear afterwards how driven I am. And I do appreciate their, their patience with me. I always do, as, as I acknowledge, I am very ambitious for the university and, and I'm very driven and I'm constantly pushing. And I'm happy that they're adapting so well to this leadership style. You know, the leadership team here does meet every week before cabinet to wow the university, to show them exactly what good leaders can do. They meet for an hour to talk about how they're engaging in these strategies. As I shared with them at our, our meeting last year when we were in retreat and, and developing professionally around becoming a better and more, you know, just a team that works like a team rather than a collection of individuals. I shared with them that these strategies that were created are a promise to the people at the university. They came together after months of studying and designing to tell us exactly where they wanted the university to go. The message was large and clear. And to the credit of, of the leaders behind me, they've taken it very seriously. And there is pushback, right? There is pushback, even though these were collaboratively disconstructed. But I really believe in that communal voice, that voice that, that pushed forward my first year here and said, hey, let's do this and let's get to work. The thing that happened most frequently after those strategies were constructed was that people said, no one follows through on things at EOU. No one completes the strategies. And I, I strongly believe that we have to prove them wrong. We have to prove to them that this is what a university does when it comes together.
Well, and, and to our, to our administrative leaders, our, our admin group cabinet, you guys, I know it takes a lot of work and what you're doing to support our students, support our staff, support our university, I'm very thankful for that. Lots of hours, lots of hours to be great, I just know that. Okay, I'm going to move to the final topic. Trustees, we are now in our final agenda topic. At our main meeting, you reviewed the draft of the university's seven-year accreditation report to the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. Today, you are asked to give your approval, the final version of the report. Provost Peter Geisinger will introduce this item. Peter, when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair, Chairman Doza, and good morning and everyone. This time it hit me, being in the unenviable spot between you and lunch. And that spot really doesn't reflect the importance of this topic, which is our accreditation, of course. I talked about this many times, yeah, and I'm going to repeat myself again a little bit today for the benefit of new board member, too. So our accreditation goes in seven-year cycles, right? It's, we are in year seven now. That means we have to have our comprehensive evaluation after that seven years. For this, we have to submit the report that we asked you today to approve to the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. And the, the commission in 2020 changed their approach to that comprehensive evaluation. They split it up in their two main standards. One was asked, we were asked to report on in a year six report, which is really policies, procedure, financial resources, a lot of the background work. We submitted that work, that report last year. We got feedback, it went really well. We had one recommendation that referred to the incomplete advising manual, but we were just in the process of restructuring advising. So that was in progress. This has now been addressed, and you saw in the appendix of the report, this year seven report now, where we had to address this, that this advising manual is now updated and has been publicly available. So the other standard in the year seven report then is the one about students, education and institutional effectiveness. And so we've been working on this report, which includes, as you have seen, a lot of data on our learning outcome assessments and our university KPIs, you know, what we want to achieve in terms of student performance and various other things. The, our staff liaison at the Northwest Commission has reviewed, has previewed that report, which was really nice, you know, has been through an earlier draft and made some really good recommendation, all of which were, were incorporated into this final report. What happens after that, after that report? Well, we have a site visit scheduled already, which is of course contingent on us submitting this report. Now, the year seven report starts from October 27th to October 29th. And it's, we have an evaluation team coming to campus on that day. One evaluator on a separate day will also visit our Clackamas location where we offer education programs. So that, those two days will be full of meetings, and they will want to meet with the board with as many of you as, as possible. But there's a host of other meetings because they want to capture every aspect of our operations. I mean, of course, IT and facilities are meeting. They meet with every division head and representatives from those divisions. There is a meeting with faculty, Senate representatives, with university council representatives. There's a staff open forum, faculty open forum, and just a host of meeting of the accreditation team itself here on campus. Yeah, ITIR, I mean, I just, it's, I have here the schedule from the last meeting. So it's quite something in terms of the meetings that, that have to happen. We don't have a schedule yet for this year's meeting. Again, we have to submit our report first. Once we know who our chair is, who is appointed to be the chair of our commission, we then work out with them the precise schedule going forward. So then the evaluation team at the very end of, of their visit will give a brief campus presentations on their findings with, with recommendations that, that, that they may have for us. At this point, this cannot be discussed. They just come in, say, this is it, and then they leave. But there will be a report in writing with much more details on, on, on where we are standing. It then goes to the commissioners of the Northwest Commission. They have a meeting at the end of January, you know, where our case, our application for another seven years of accreditation will be discussed. But again, the task today, the request from us is that you approve that year seven report so we can submit it to the commission for accreditation. Thank you.
If I may, I would love to just highlight one of the things you shared. So I, some of you are at longer distances away, and then that's actually perfectly okay. The commission, much like our students, is going to be okay with being in a room that is both Zoom and in person. So there's just literally no need to have that close proximity these days, given all the extensive tools we have. So please understand when we send you those dates, it's okay to pop in and Zoom. It's not going to make a difference. They're used to that. Indeed, in my last role, we, we zoomed quite a bit in these circumstances, and, and that was ages ago.
And I would just say as a reminder, in our board notes, there's a section of the committee reports and what they, what they work on in terms of indicators. So if you needed to see that. Trustee Gigan.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. This is exciting, this seventh, the seventh year when they come on a site, because it's a lot going on. And my question is, when they are coming for the site visit, what is your plan? Do you have assigned ambassadors, deans that would represent certain areas so that when they come and ask questions, it's, it's, it's more structured? Or is everything filtered through you?
No, no, there, there is a, I mean, it depends on the chair of the team, how they want to run this, yeah. If the last years, last visit is any guide, they are very directive in telling what groups they want to have. And there are actually, there's overlap in some of those groupings. The same people are in multiple groupings, but they insist on having, you know, an overall topic, yeah. Again, so we, we, yeah. We'll keep you posted as soon as we know more and we can talk to the chair about how the visit will actually unfold.
Thank you, and that's exciting. If you need any support from us, I'm sure that we would all be happy to help on such an important and seven-year event.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, team, is there any more comments or questions? This is an action item, so I would like to, some, I would like for someone to make a motion to approve and this person to second. Trustee Valerio.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the seven-year comprehensive report.
It's been moved by Trustee Valerio, any seconds?
A second.
It's been seconded by Trustee Real. At this time, I will call for a roll call vote. Secretary Burford, please poll the trustees.
Trustees, please answer yes or no. When I call your name, I will proceed alphabetically. Christine Cronin?
Yes.
Scott Davidson?
Yes.
Margot Gigan?
Yes.
Gary George is not here. Chuck Hoffman?
Yes.
Aaron Layer?
Yes.
Tamara Mavick?
Yes.
Cedric Rio?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Anna Stanley?
Yes.
Carrie Thompson?
Yes.
Mauricio Valerio?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. So we're now at that point where we're going to do some closing remarks. As a reminder, each year in November, the board appoints either the board chair or the vice chair. The chair is appointed in odd numbered years and the vice chair in even numbered years. This is an odd numbered year. That means that at the November meeting, you will pick a person to serve as the chair for the next two years. As you know, that person won't be me. So my, my appointment on this board ends on June 30th of this year. Or of next year, I guess you can say. That means that you will have to pick someone else to serve as a chair for the next two years. So I want you to think about that. You got some time, of course. You have, you have committee meetings that'll happen in October, and then you have the, the board meeting that will happen in November. I, I will lead that meeting in November, but at the end of that meeting, it's a time for us to, to vote on who your next board chair will be. And I, I think I've told some of you this before. You've got people in great leadership roles and responsibility right now. And my hope is that we look at some of the people that are already either chairs of committees or the vice chair of the board to be able to move into chair positions or vice chair positions for the full board. So I'm going to leave it at that. Secretary Burford, can you please describe the procedure in the university bylaws in Article Three, Section Five E?
Yes, certainly. So you saw earlier, I won't take you back through the website of where the university bylaws are, but it's Article Three, Section Five E, and this is what it says. Six weeks prior to the board meeting at which the chair and vice chair are to be appointed, the board secretary shall send a notice to all trustees inviting nominations for the officer positions and setting a deadline of two weeks prior to the board meeting for submission of nominations. The materials posted for that board meeting shall include a list of the nominees for each position. In this case, we now alternate the positions each year, so it's just the one. So by October one, I will send you all a request for nominees. You will have until October twenty ninth to send those to me. I will include the list of nominees in the board materials that will be posted on November fifth. And at the October, I'm sorry, the November twelfth of board meeting, we will have a poll vote to appoint the next chair. Chairman Mendoza will remain in office until the end of the November board meeting. That's it. All right. We we sort of, we've now gotten in the habit, I think, of doing this annual, so it's not a great surprise, but it's useful to review it before we get into it.
Thank you for that. Okay, well, I'm just grateful for all of you. I'm glad that we've been able to spend some time together. Right now, we have a little bit of time for reflection. And so and feedback. If you've been around me, you know that I like to do the once around the room. And you heard a lot of stuff, so some of it was financial, some of it was strategic, some of it was our own self-evaluation. There was a lot of things that we did with our foundation board. And then you also shared some really cool things about about yourself and why you serve on this board. So my hope is that there's one or two or three things that you really liked. But if there's something that's on your mind that that we did well and something that also we can improve, I'd like to to make sure we have time for that. Who would like to go first? We can always do round robin, or if there's somebody that really wants to go first, we can start that way. Trustee Hoffman, can you start for us, my friend?
Well, you know, again, good meeting, and I appreciate your leadership, Mister Chair. For the benefit of the F and A members as well as all of you, I mentioned yesterday a little bit about the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. I just wanted to point out that even though we ended the last fiscal year with one point six million dollars higher than our budget, a lot of that was due to the true PSU money, which is, we've we've used up and to the increased enrollment of in the the MS programs that that have been started. Those programs are now full, and so even though the tuition will continue, there will be those continued increase. And at the same time, we have a couple of union negotiations that the president is going to have to have to work through. So so we've spent a lot of time talking about finances, but we're going to be spending a lot more time talking about finances, so that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Hoffman. Trustee Thompson.
I would just like to say that, you know, this is, I'm going into my third year on the board, and, you know, I'm getting to know some of you better. And, you know, it's kind of, you know, making new friendships and and and, you know, it's just trying to, myself personally, I'm trying to find a way to become more engaged, and and I think me being an employee of EOU makes things a little difficult sometimes because, you know, we're we're up here at this level, and and I'm kind of thinking down here. And, you know, as Chris has told me before, don't dig into the weeds too much. So, you know, just trying to figure out that. I mean, been two years I've been here and I'm still trying to figure that out sometimes. And I apologize if I don't contribute a lot, but over in the next year, that's kind of one of the goals I have for myself is to be more engaged with what's going on with the board. Thank you.
That was very vulnerable, Carrie Thompson. Thanks for that. Trustee Gigan.
Thank you. I really don't have a lot to share other than to to thank you for your service. You've been a great chair. And I'm kind of sad to see you step down. I think that you're really good at bringing people together and communicating. And I've just been really impressed working with you over the last year or so. I'm actually impressed with everyone that I've worked with for the last year. I've enjoyed my experience, and believe it or not, I've enjoyed today's meeting, which is, you know, it's summer, so that says a lot. I'm happy to be here, and I just want to say, you know, for next year's retreat, and we're talking about, you know, team building, maybe we should go golfing or or bowling or, you know. Yeah, something like that where we all get together and pickleball or something, you know. But I'll just put that out there. I've had a great experience. I'm looking forward to this next year, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Mabit.
Thank you. It's been a really good couple of days. A few years ago, we went trap shooting as a board. It was pretty fun. I like that. Much better than golfing, in my opinion. But it's been a terrific couple of days. I'm I continue to say this, but I'm so humbled to be a part of this group. And I think, oh, Tamara, can you just give a little bit more time? So I committed to myself and to you, I'll do a little bit more homework because sometimes I don't read absolutely everything. So did I have guilt written all over my face earlier this morning? I will, and I just will re-up my commitment to do whatever I can on the governance committee. And I've appreciated the last few days when I get to pull aside a few moments to have a little one-on-one. It's really valuable. I appreciate that. Finally, I'll say that one of the reasons I like the governance committee is Chris makes me a lot smarter.
That's really cool. Trustee Davidson.
Thank you. Well, first of all, everybody's maybe feel very welcome, so I appreciate that. It's been a good chance for me over the last several years, being involved with the foundation to really kind of reconnect with with LaGrande and with the Eastern Oregon EOU community that I kind of had not really been part of since I had left LaGrande many, many years ago. So I appreciate the welcoming. You know, really impressed with kind of how the board operates and the people I've got to know just briefly over the last twenty-four hours that I didn't know previously. So really look forward to working with all of you. I see I've got a couple of committee appointments here as well that Chris and I had talked about. So looking forward to working with everybody on those committees and just kind of getting a chance to know you and see a little bit more in the weeds as we deal with the governance and the finance piece. So thank you for making me feel welcome and look forward to it.
Trustee Layer.
I'm kind of sensing a theme and some reflection and a lot about the relationships building within the board. And I think I just want to echo that. I was really thrilled to be sitting next to Scott, our new trustee, and getting to know him a bit over the last two days. I also just really want to express appreciation to the agenda. I thought that the topics were really timely. Dr. Ryan, I really appreciated the way that you navigated us through that kind of critical thinking exercise of where we're at as a university, what variables we really need to be tracking and thinking of, and then bringing that back. Today, you could see a lot of that reflection in the goals that we had set. So I just think that the flow of the agenda was really well done, and the content was also well done. So thank you to that, and thanks to all the trustees here. I just always enjoy our time together, and I would echo, too. I'm, you know, time to spend together outside of the boardroom is always appreciated where it makes sense. I also know we're all very busy.
Trustee Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Mendoza. I would say for this meeting, I really appreciated the three foundations or the three boards coming together. That that was really important for me, I think. And I'm particularly curious at the messaging that comes from the work we did yesterday. I I really want it to be authentic. So, yeah, great meeting. I I really enjoyed it. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Valerio.
Thank you. Kudos to the agenda, same thought. I thought it was very productive to have a mix of reflections, aspirational conversation and inspirational conversation, all of them. And notwithstanding the importance of finances, so thank you because that leads a lot of the things and the thoughts and the future of what we're doing. The three boards coming together is super cool. I think we should make that a staple of every next board retreat. I would love to see that, honoring alumni, honoring the commitment of to the foundation of EOU and and the board, I think it's pretty nice. So thank you. I really enjoyed it. And that's it. So thank you. And love what you have done, George. You have a natural way of bringing people together, so thank you for that. And we're looking forward for a little bit more, maybe more if we can convince you. I don't know. Maybe we can twist some arms. I don't know. Make them an offer they can't refuse, like in old movies, you know.
Thank you for the kind words. Trustee Real.
Yeah, I'll try not to get on too much of a soapbox, but I enjoyed I enjoyed the meeting and met a lot of different individuals. And for me, it was the first time really meeting some of the different folks on some of the different boards. So I enjoyed that exposure and being able to actually talk. And, you know, I mean, that kind of goes to our, one of our areas of opportunity regarding how we're engaging with our stakeholders. And so meeting some of those folks was very important, so I wanted to reiterate that. Otherwise, good topics, really enjoyed meeting with everyone, enjoyed meeting our new member and look forward to the work we have for the upcoming year.
Cedric, I don't ever, I mean, I know I tell you some things once in a while outside, but I've I've been impressed with you. You're a good man and a great leader. Thankful we have you.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. I like being here.
You might want to buy some insurance from him. I told him that it's two or three years, maybe as he gets better. We'll talk about investments and whatnot. We'll see, but. Okay, I'm gonna, Anna, if you're there, I'm going to move it to you. Trustee Stanley.
Perfect. I just want to echo some of the things other people have said. I think having our alumni and foundation boards join us was truly exceptional. Some of the collaboration that came out of that was, I haven't seen anything like it come out of our regular board meetings. And so if that's something that we could continue to work on, I'd really love to see that. I want to highlight the amazing work of our leadership team. Kelly, thank you so much for all the work you've done. Chris, great agenda items. And Chairman Mendoza, fantastic leadership. I really appreciated working with you over the last, I believe, year now. And so, great meeting, guys.
Thank you, trustee Stanley. Vice Chair Cronin.
It's it's always hard to be last because I I'm going to echo that I I do hope that we can bring the three boards together. That's just really excellent. I appreciate you all very much. We are a diverse group, and I I really appreciate the the different viewpoints that you all bring to our discussion. It's a, that's why we're, we are able, I believe, to make good decisions. George, you've been an incredible leader and really enjoyed that tone that you set and and how you support the contribution of everyone. I think one of my favorite parts of this meeting was the meeting with the presentation with Dr. Ryan and Mary Muller. I I actually am very, very excited about that. I think that is a tremendous opportunity that is yet to be discovered and completely come to fruition, but I'm very excited. And I think it's an example of the type of leader that we have. And Dr. Ryan, she's very collaborative and 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 she's, because of the situation that she finds herself in with lots of new presidents, they're they're looking at at the world and at the state of Oregon in different ways. So I'm very excited about that. So anyway, great meeting. Thank you. Sorry I missed the, I heard it was karaoke and like dancing. And I I heard I missed a lot last night, so I'm sorry about that.
I didn't get the memo. It's good.
So we'd like others, obviously immense gratitude to to George, and I'm sure we'll, you know, have a sob fest in November. So I'll save some of my comments till then, but I do meet with him regularly, as many of you know, as as part of my my role, and of course, also really appreciate Christine's support. I also, you know, loved having the three boards together. We're all just saying the same thing at this point. And then, you know, prior to this meeting, I looked at kind of the raw data about the effectiveness of the board. And and I think, you know, the the primary role of the board is its fiduciary duty. And let's be honest, the finance committee is a particular challenge. So I would point out your leadership, Chuck, and the way that you work with Leanne and Cedric and others on that committee. It's taken very seriously. You know, many of you have been, were on it this year. It's it's a lot. And so I think, you know, just just sharing, I think, how much that committee is appreciated. All of our committees are important, right? But that is the primary role of the board. And so just just heartfelt gratitude to that that work, and of course, all the work that Leanne puts in it as well.
Good feedback. Secretary Burford, what are you thinking, man?
I think it all sounds great. I, you know, it's it's great when everyone's in attendance. You can see the value of how the the conversation gets ramped up. And we didn't quite have everybody, but we had quite a few, and I think that really was made for a good meeting.
I do want to share with folks, you know, we knew that that Gary George couldn't be here. And 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 I do sometimes have one-on-ones with some of the board members regarding certain aspects of of their service at the university. And I did want to say, a couple of months ago, I I went to Wild Horse and met with Gary for over an hour just to talk about the financial status of the university. And it was before I had sort of envisioned the presentation that we had yesterday. But, you know, he is kind of like our chief entrepreneur on the on the board. And so just really sat down with him just to gather his thoughts about, you know, where where we're headed. And so although he's not here today, I do want you to know that that he has, you know, worked with me and spent time with me and and been more than generous in his time, just kind of helping me flesh out some of the the problems that I see.
So I'll end with this, just again, thankful for all of you, thankful for for Chris and Susannah and Dr. Ryan. Together, we we spent time on the agenda, but Chris puts in a lot of energy and effort to to get it right. And Susannah actually, just she does most of the work in terms of putting it, putting it into something that our board will have or our board will see or that we will feel. So I'm thankful for that. I do think you've built a really great team, Eastern Oregon University, Dr. Ryan. So, you know, you have to have a great leader, but a great leader can only go so far. So the reality is you have to have a great team that buys in and supports, and and I get to to see that. I'll say to you guys, these types of things, Chris and I did spend time. We did get Kelly's input, too, on the trustee committee assignments. But ultimately, it is my responsibility to put folks. And I just would say, I do, and I did spend time with Chris on people and their roles and their experiences and their knowledge and their skills and what would get the best out of it for EOU and from a big-picture standpoint. So there is a lot of thought and energy that gets put into putting us in the the best position possible so that we can have the best results possible. So I'm glad that you're all supporting us in in our committee meetings. I think those committee meetings are almost as important as our full board meetings. The reason we have results that we have sometimes is because we have people working on governance or academic affairs or financial. And for them to be knowledgeable and skillful and then position us so that we can make really good decisions as a full board. So the the work that you do to put in that time, that energy, it means a lot to me. I I've always been a a very busy person as well. And to Tamara's point, I don't, I don't read everything every single time because I I just don't have the time to read everything every single time. I'm, I usually feel in the moment, I'll I'll read what I need to read and I give you the best that I can give you. And I think that's that's all we can ask sometimes for all of us. So more than anything, appreciate your talent and your skills and your contributions and your time for service on this board. I wish I had more time at some lo, at some level for me. This is probably more. This is probably more my eleventh year, um, contributing to this board. And I love it. You know, it's, it is my, my favorite, um, duty or calling, I think, to, to serve, um, on this board. I love being, uh, an educator, of course, probably more than anything, but, uh, serving on this board, I think has given me a lot of purpose and meaning as well and, and I'm just grateful for that too. Okay, great meeting. I know we're going to spend some time in October for committees and then we'll get together in November as a full board.
Chairman Dosa, if I may add one more thing, if I could. I forgot, uh, another moment of gratitude. I really want to look at Provost Geisinger and say thank you, because we just actually casted a vote, but I don't think it came with a thank you for you and many on this, in this room and many on the team to the importance of the accreditation process. And so I, I really want to say that before we close. That's one of the highlights of the meeting. It was not just a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Geisinger. You can say something, Chris.
I was just going to say, look for a notice about a celebration of the 10th anniversary of the board.
Nice. Look forward to that. Great food, I hope. All right. All right, team. Thank you all. That concludes the agenda for the 2025 annual summer retreat with no further business. The regular meeting of the governance or of the full board meeting, uh, for our, our board retreat is adjourned.